I'd like to call our, continue with our school board meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 15th. This is our regular meeting. Present in the boardroom, we have members, board member Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. We also have our student, Ms. Ellie Shaw, who is with us. We have Dr. Deanna Bishop, as well as our amazing Katie Grant. So please stand, Ms. Shaw, when you're ready for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Deninian people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples to none.
Thank you. So we, the board would also like to welcome everyone to our meeting, and we'd like to thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and of this board. The board welcomes students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community. And we thank you for your investment in our district. We thank you for your time, your talent, and of course, your tax dollars. With that, we are, that brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Move in second, that we accept the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote. Okay. Is there any opposition to the motion to accept as presented? Seeing none? The agenda is approved. That brings us to item B, our Student Advisory Board Report. Ms. Shaw.
So Student Advisory Board, or SAB, met on February 15th, 2022, at 11:15 a.m. in this boardroom. Sorry. The SAB Executive Board is meeting tomorrow over Zoom to plan and discuss the next meeting where we will be holding elections for the remainder of the positions on the exec board. Student Advisory Board's next meeting is on March 22nd, 2022, from 8:15 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. And I just know for an overall of at least the high schools, you know, all pretty busy planning proms, assemblies, you know, track events, sports, so keeping busy for fourth quarter.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Are there any questions? Now, when did you say your next meeting? Is it the 22nd? Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, thank you. That brings us to our go monitoring conversation. This, um, this time around, we have actually two goals that we're going to take, we're going to have a conversation about. Let me grab my notes. I know I have it here, maybe I didn't print it off. Okay, give me one minute, sorry. I'm gonna have to read it off of my computer. All right, so tonight's conversation is focused on goals, goal number three, and interim goal number 3.1. Goal number three, actually, is on the screen. Beginning with the freshman class of September 2020, the percentage of high school students graduating life-ready as well as college and/or career-ready will increase from a baseline to be determined in this spring to 90% in the spring of 2026. Interim goal number 3.1, read, is before you as well tonight. The percentage of grade nine through 12 students successfully completing a financial literacy course will increase from, to be, a percentage to be determined in the spring of 2022 to a, um, another percentage to be determined in the spring of 2023. So with that, I'd like to confirm that all components of the monitoring report are present. The report clearly shows what is being monitored. We have a specific goal and a specific interim goal. The report shows the data for the three previous reporting periods, and in this case, that might not be the case because these are both, we are determining baselines for both goals. The report shows that we are on track. That is a superintendent's evaluation of the performance of the goal. We are on track. And the goal, the report also shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation based on tables that are provided and the next steps that are also given within the report. So for the first part of our conversation, we'll dig into the data, or whatever questions you may have. So we'll begin with the who, the what, and the why. And of course, as always, if you can hold your how questions to the end, I know it's hard, we'll get to those as well. So with that logic in mind, we want to begin our conversation. We want to start tonight with financial literacy. So we will, if you can separate your questions, I kind of combined mine, but I'll separate them out. So who has a question, financial literacy question for Dr. Bishop? Okay, so I, oh, yes, member Wilson. Yes, sorry.
Kind of in, just a general overview of what students will be receiving financial literacy information and how the district plans to go about providing that information.
Thank you, and that's a great question. That's really one that the majority of board members had because this is new. So the idea of financial literacy isn't a new construct, however, making it a requirement. And one of the things I always love to share is that the financial literacy component came from students themselves in the surveys and in the discussions. They were like, we want to know, remember I use that term adulting? And then when we dug deeper to say, what do you mean by adulting? They said, well, you know, like checkbooks and money and loans and things like that, we need to learn about money. We don't do that in schools. And so I was like, huh, I mean, pretty intuitive from the mouths of babes, these were high school kids. So to that point, what presently is given is a requirement, is an economics course to graduate. And that economics is really a macroeconomics, not really personal or microeconomics, personal planning or things like that. So we're utilizing the group of teachers that have gotten together to assist with this. The decision was made, we're going to, the economics course does touch on financial literacy, but not in depth enough to meet the standards that we added to this financial literacy update. And those six things are earning income, spending, saving, investing, managing credit, and managing risk. And those items come from the National Standard for Personal Financial Literacy. And while they're touched on, we are going to, in the academic plans, the teachers that are working on this, build them out so that the standards for specifically financial literacy are taught in the economics course, not just touched on. And what they're gonna do, go back then, is do a review of the whole economics course to note, what are we teaching in there that is something of our choice? And what are we teaching in something that the kids are held accountable for in the standards? And so if there needs to be any adjustments, they could just ensure that any standard by state law that we need to teach won't be missed. So that's a great question of kind of how. And again, it's being designed, students, this comes four years later. So students have time, we have time to build it, to pilot it, to take a look at it, make adjustments. And then from years to now, we'll be set with students in ASD specifically having this. And just so you know, Junior Achievement and some other things are partners right now, and they're very excited about this. Presently, there is $4 trillion of debt in people, 18 to 25, national standard. That's why we want college and career and life-ready.
Can you talk a little bit more about this? So the partners, there would be opportunity for partners to be involved, like Junior Achievement, you mentioned Junior Achievement in the economics course.
So not specifically in the economics course, but we're meeting with Junior Achievement, and they have a program in our elementary, middle, and high. There, if there's someone there that can provide advice, things like that. But similar to our other curriculum looks, they are the experts in the fields, the teachers themselves, that they seek input from the experts, whether it's in research, people locally, programs like Junior Achievement. We, we have met with Junior Achievement before this, and we're continuing to meet with Junior Achievement. They just have a high interest, and their director is really supportive of this. We want what they do then in our classrooms to understand what kids are gonna be learning also in, in, in high school. So it's not just giving it to them, it's, again, partnerships.
Thank you. So any other? Okay, I'll ask one, oh, sorry, member Jacobs, sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just a question for the superintendent. What's, what year typically do high school students end up taking economics currently?
May I, Dr. Johnson, is it senior year economics? Junior year economics. So they'll have another opportunity, several opportunities. And it is a semester course, correct? So there'd be four, three courses after their first try if they need assistance and support.
Oh, okay. So what happened in ninth grade? Nothing so far in terms of?
This is a graduate, it was written, the goal as a graduation requirement. We do have presently a couple of financial literacy courses, but the-
Elective, like?
Elective. But the goal is that the, the who is kids in ninth through 12th grade should have this. So basically, the ninth through 12th grade is identifying high school as opposed to everyone. So at the end of your goal, you're gonna have, of the kids who then graduate with us, which ones have literacy? Not just the kids in any given grade level. Because kids change grade levels.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, so are we on track? We will have a baseline, do you think?
Absolutely. It's zero right now. Because it's the financial literacy to ensure that all get. And again, when we looked at the financial literacy courses, some of them weren't designed around the national standards because they've been around for 20, 30 years. And basically, what the team is doing is to update those as well. And they may, the resources for those might be joined, or some of them are in specific career fields rather than, you know, the general overall view. So we're, they're just doing a review of all of them to see how can we align these? And for many years, you could just write a course, and the person who taught it knew everything in it, and then the course stayed on the books, but other people didn't have access to what was taught in it. And now, through this curriculum review process, in ASD, you present courses, but they're going to be logged, they're going to be kept, syllabi, the expectations, standards, the goals for learning are all now aligned, and essentially, we're cleaning up our curriculum. When I came to the district, I think there were over 10,000 courses, but over half of them hadn't been taught in 20 years. So we, we are cleaning those up.
Member Holloman, you had a question?
I was gonna say, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that my previous colleagues in career technology and education in middle school do a lot of financial, or did a lot of financial literacy. I think some of those classes are drying up. But the value of electives, particularly in middle school, is they can be very adaptive to the student body if they express an interest. It's a little less regulated than the high school environment, if we can get away with it. But the value of electives, if we're able to fund them, is that you can hook kids into those things that, that they have an interest in and will study at that time. I hope we can enrich in that environment as time goes on.
And may I come on to another, I mean, that's exactly why the decision was made to embed it in, in, for that elective reason. We didn't want to take away an elective of a child in high school. And yet, in middle school, they really are freedom, and we couldn't guarantee that everyone would get it. And so coupling it with a course that we have, and then when we looked and they did the initial review of economics, and this is done across the country, this isn't like, you know, an original idea, but that you could take a look at the standards that need to be met and either teach more, take something away, add something, and that team is going to present that. The, the team of people who teach economics right now is going to present the plan they're working with, teaching and learning presently.
Is that a semester class?
Yes, financial literacy, economics is a semester. So it's a half a credit course, needed for graduation so we know that the kids will get it.
I think that was, that, that moved, that was a great move to embed it into what, something we already had that we, was already required. Other questions on finance, yes?
Actually, I have a follow-up question maybe to that. If financial literacy is embedded within the economics semester, will we distinguish how they're doing overall in that econ class from how they're doing the financial literacy component? I mean, if we're looking at data, or if we give a drill down on the financial literacy component? Or are we just gonna accept the econ grade as a metric?
The econ grade, because the financial literacy standards would be within there, built within. But certainly, if we directed when, you could pull a quarter, but that might be too limiting on teachers, I think. But we could have an assessment. I mean, there's lots of different ways that you could just pull that piece out. But it technically already is, but not at the level that we believe. Really, the whole course needs to take a look at the standards that are being taught, you know, with, with, in, in regard to financial literacy, so. But that's a great question. I know we could do it, but what's the opportunity cost of that for classrooms?
Does the state of Alaska have any standards for financial?
There are not state-adopted standards for financial literacy. Yeah, they use the national, other districts have them. Not state standards, but other districts have expectations and whatnot. But I think the state of Alaska might pull from the national.
Right, any other questions on financial literacy? All right, thank you, Dr. Bishop. So let's move on to our next report. What I'd like to do is at the end, adopt both reports, but let's just continue with our AP completion rate and open up the floor for questions in that, for that goal. All right, member Lessons?
Yeah, I appreciate these reports, like I appreciate all the reports. I think it's a great opportunity for the board to get comfortable with how our students are doing. So I was really interested in the relationship between enrollment and completion rate, and our enrollment numbers have gone up. And so I started thinking, I'm sorry, our enrollment numbers have gone down, and my own toggling about seemed to suggest that we have had a slight uptick in the raw number of students who have completed. I'm curious, who have the additional students been? Are they located across the eight comprehensive schools? Or they, do they reside within certain schools where we have added courses?
Sure, so that's a great question. And when we took it to our data experts, the, the number of changes is significant according to like having 3,500 kids at a grade level. However, the work that we're doing now in looking about who enrolls and who isn't is part of the continued work. So we will have a specific report at the end of the year. Again, as a reminder, these data are, and we're presently in the next one. And so we just have to wait on that to kind of judge. But in the overall picture of it, the work didn't just start with this goal or with the equal opportunity schools that were working with the College Board. Years ago, there was a National Math and Science Initiative, or NIMZI, and they worked in this state, in Anchorage, they worked with, it was through a military grant to increase AP enrollment, and they actually had a focus of increasing the AP test score, kids passing the score. We're just looked at passing the tech, the class with an A, B, or C. And so, and the goal has always been to increase, but we'll bring back to the board the changes at the end of this year. That's part of the report that we'll prepare. But at this point in time, we didn't think to dig into it, and it's a lot of work to be able to have just a subcomplete and take a guess on it. But your question will come at the end of the year. And I saw the preliminary, and there's some changes in enrollment for next year as well. So that's the biggest promise.
Other questions? My, my questions aren't necessarily on the, on the data. I think we're on track, which, which is very evident. I'm, I'm more concerned, not concerned, I'm just interested in, you know, demystifying AP courses. I don't know that a lot of parents know what they might need to know about AP classes and how to access them. So if you could talk a little bit about the AP courses, who administer them, what the curriculum's like, that would be great.
Sure, so to be an AP teacher and be able to teach, you do go through an additional kind of training and certification. And it is basically a very defined program. So, you know, if you talk about academic plans and not liking to be, you know, have to take a share in the quality of whatever, I mean, AP is that. Like, it's determined, and teachers are highly trained on it, have to pass, those that score even are highly qualified. So this is additional work for our teachers. The teachers that go through this are trained at a different level. And demystifying it is actually part of the work that we know we need to do to gain, you know, confidence in our community, kids, teachers, everybody in increasing these. Because basically, AP classes are college-level rigor provided in high school with the structural supports. So they have a relationship with college success or rigorous opportunities outside of college. And I want to share that career advancement, whether it's through apprenticeship or certifications or, you know, AA degrees, they are difficult as well. So I don't want you to think that AP is only for this college. AP is to be able to work through complex problems and information in a very skillful way with problem solving. And so we want to increase it for all. Part of the work with equal opportunity schools that we've shared a little bit as part of our equity work is that they go in, look at scores of kids and grades, and say, are these kids in this course? If not, they should be because they have the competency to, so what are we doing about it? And I shared again that equity work in some districts look like, take away the exam, make things fair, just do a lottery. You can't lottery yourself into an AP course. It, it's rigorous. But it is upon us from, that's why I'm so strong on reading and skill building at the elementary and middle level because we will take away the opportunity before the kid even gets to 11th grade to get into an AP class. So the work that we're doing in elementary and middle school fits right in that, to demystify is to actually encourage more rigorous learning, encourage the honors courses for all. I, I shared a parent group that I spoke to about a program about dual enrollment. I said, yes, and this, and they were like, a gal raised her hand and said, is this opportunity for everyone? And I said, of course, everyone in the district. You know, I was pretty naive, and she said, this is my first year here. You know, no, I might even have been Dr. Pramo at the time. No, Dr. Pramo, you're missing it. You took away some kid's ability when you didn't teach them in elementary school because now they're having to relearn stuff in middle school, and then they're never on that track to have that opportunity. And that stayed with me for a long time. And that's why I'm a, a strong advocate of building the skills to let the student choose. You know, everybody has to have those. So we talk about it, we encourage rigor, trying to demystify it. Part of the EOC, which is exciting, and I know this might be too much, but it's the exciting part. Someone from the College Board works as a coach to a team in every school that are highly trained and looking for indicators. They actually do a survey of kids about who are the trusted adults in your school. And then those trusted adults from kids of all different backgrounds get trained more to be able to direct kids to AP because everyone has that person that, it might have been your parent. It's like, no, you're gonna take this class because you can. You need to challenge yourself. Sometimes it's a friend, join this with me, we can do it together. Sometimes it is the custodian in our school that I have a trust with, that if that person has high trust of students, we're training the person with high trust to say, get your butt in that class because you can do it. And, and so those are the types of things that this equal opportunity schools does. It's just training to know how to identify skilling kids who don't have the internal know-how or even motivation to think that they can do it, but to offer the support to say, no, you, you gotta do that. You, you need to do that. So that, so it's not about dumbing down a course because AP courses are regulated. And they're very regulated because they have an assessment that kids have to pass at the end. And both the teachers and the kids and the parents want to know, how well did my child do? And how many kids passed in this class and how many didn't? Before kids even look at their skill, their scores, when I was working in schools, teachers wanted to know, which my kids got, threes, fours, and fives? You know, they're just as excited for the success of students. So I know that was a long answer, but I get excited about this corny stuff. I love it.
But I appreciate it because I think, you know, it's embedded in what we're doing, making sure people are aware, they have access, and they have the opportunity. But sometimes it's just, you know, you know, that, that just, that grassroots conversation, and who are the people in the school who can carry that out? So I, I'm glad to hear that. So along the same line, though, are there any, have we noticed any barriers in terms of what the work we've done so far? What, what likely keeps people out? Or not have them, not keep them out, but not have them pursue it?
Well, it would really depend. I mean, there's skills involved. You, you can't just wish yourself, and, and you have to have a good grounding. And so we are working on pre-AP, that's why that's so important to us. That's why our English curriculum is so, our English materials, rather, not just the, the curriculum, is the whole kit and caboodle of the plans and the assessments and the instruction. What we're talking about is the materials. We're highly interested in that because it, it does take that level of skill, and Spring Board is specifically designed for rigor to allow, have enough experiences of that skill and kind of how you inquiry and question back and forth to provide those skills that kids get good at them before they first see them in a AP course. So our Spring Board is part of this work, and it's the skills that teachers have that overlay on how they teach the standards that matter, both when they're young, going through middle school, as well as high school. And so high school, we have teachers- And so high school, we have teachers. When we train them in pre-AP, they realize that it's just a set of skills that they can have and questioning techniques and inquiry that they can overlay on what they're already doing to make sure that every kid could be, if he or she wanted, have an opportunity for AP if they worked hard to be able to do it.
And all of our schools have opportunities for AP, all the high schools?
Yep. And I did get an early question, so I have some data on that if you want me to share it.
Thank you.
You want me to jump ahead? So of the large high schools, AP is provided through our online as well. And just so you know, Apex now is used for everything. But Apex was the first online curriculum 20 years ago that actually offered AP courses. That's where the AP in Apex comes from. So I've done studies in the past where kids were on with their classroom teacher, same classroom teacher. She had AP kids online and she had AP kids in her classroom. And when those kids took the test, they were almost identical scores. So it's pretty, the work that you have to do on the online one will prepare you as well for the rigor, just so you know. We've done those studies. But so the high schools, so even though it's not one of these high schools, if I go to a different one, I could take it online or come to one of these high schools during the time if I could. So first one is Bartlett, has 11 different courses. All of our major high schools, Big Eight, have a core set of the core courses that we have, the four core areas, science, English, math, and social studies. And then they would add courses according to the interests or number of kids. So this isn't the number of kids specifically, this is the courses. Bartlett has 11, Eagle River has 12, Betty Davis has 16, Service has 26, Chugiak has 10, South Anchorage High School has 19, Diamond has 21, and West has 12. But they also run concurrently an IB program, which is taking half their kids that wouldn't mind. But it also, just so you know, depends on the teachers. It is extra work for them to teach AP, to get their certifications. And when they get a certification to teach AP in, say, a history, there's a different certification for AP geography. So it's not just in the construct, it's actually in the course. So do you understand that? So the teachers that teach multiple courses would have to be trained in those course content areas. Even though I'm a history, I might have to do several. Even though I'm a biology teacher, I might do biology and chemistry. Maybe I'm a science teacher. You'd have to get both of those skills and learn those. So it's teacher-dependent as well. Secondary does run large scale. We try to bring the trainers up here. Dr. Johnson partners with other school districts. We have it here. Other school districts come in. We're kind of a hub for learning AP and getting AP certs. She does that in the summertime. And we pay for some of those costs.
That's pretty awesome. Okay, yes, member lessons?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if this is an accurate question, given that this is referring to, I'm thinking about slide four. So we've only been through the first semester for the second half of this slide. But I was looking at the numbers and it looks like, although we have more, slightly more economically disadvantaged students attempting AP classes this year, there may be significant decreases among our non-ELL, our non-SPED, and our non-economically disadvantaged students. So those three groups maybe are significantly under-enrolling this year. So I guess, is my read of that correct?
That is a good read. And all, not just AP courses, but coming off of the pandemic year, kids struggled with their academics. They struggled mentally, behaviorally. And you will see in honors courses and tough electives, higher skilled music classes even, and AP, that there was a significant drop across the board last year. We did not do children good service at home. Not that we didn't try, but being a high school student, taking school from your bedroom, you know, there's other important work. So this is, we find that same statistic with all difficult courses. It was tough on kids. And I just have seen enrollment numbers and not until you see the whites of kids' eyes to know that they're sitting in that chair. It's going to significantly increase. The report that Dr. Johnson shared with me on enrollments for next year, because we're in the process of that, looked really healthy. So kids are getting back, they're getting back.
Questions? So I think you answered most of my questions. You mentioned supports. So are there specifically for AP and specifically for children who may struggle, regardless of their circumstance? Do we have, does each one of the schools have some kind of support in place for AP, or is it not?
That's a great question. And schools generally do. And honestly, many teachers, the last thing teachers want to see, and I just want to say that, is their children struggle. So there's a lot of teachers that say, come before school, after school, lunch, I'll help you get, you know, a little small study group together. So very informally right now, but through the equal opportunity schools process, it was worked on last year. Sonia Hunt and Kirsten did a presentation that that's one of the identifiers of one of the supports that we could do last year to encourage kids to take AP courses when elementary was back in school. And even in the fall, when we had reading for elementary to come in, we offered high school, if you need AP, we'll have study groups in schools so you can come see each other, you know, utilizing the protocols and stuff. So that's part of it, but that is a major identifier. And what the EOC schools and their groups have talked about is formalizing that. But you would work with the kids there, when would it help you? And a lot of times, it's just help on figuring out how to answer the types of questions. It's pretty high level, a lot of writing, a lot of authentic responses needed. And so that's the area that kids struggle the most. Like anything, they can do a multiple choice, but the part of the assessment that they have a tough time on is the writing and response. So having those writing and response study groups was key.
So is there, is there a cost or any prerequisite for an AP class?
Well, the prerequisites is just the ability essentially. So, you know, what we want to, how we want to support kids is getting them into pre-AP and then, you know, supporting them. They do consider your ability, you know, to get into the course. But work with kids, you know, if kids fall short but want to work really hard, you know, we'll give them that. The cost isn't to the course. The cost is if you want to take, which we encourage all the kids to do this, the test. And if it's not affordable to you, we will have a waiver and ASD will pay for it. But the tests are between 80 and 90 bucks, I think. They're expensive. And so if I'm in two AP courses or four, some kids are, that's how much money they pay. And again, they're on a five-point scale with an AP course because they're going out for the rigor. But they only get dual credit if the receiving university accepts College Board, that assessment, the AP test. Most do at four and five. Many state schools take a three as well. And you can just not have to pay. So it pays for itself if, in college.
And by prerequisite, what I meant was whether, like, letters of recommendation required? Is there like an application to be filled out?
Oh, I don't have to. No, no, it's just enrollment and taking a look if you can do it.
And having the ability. Great, 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 great. Okay, I think I one way or the other answered all my questions.
Yeah, and we've, you know, the one chart there showed growth over time, over these years, like member lessons said. And it has been because ASD has worked on this a long time. This just didn't happen. But now what we're doing is measuring it, and you treasure what you measure. So schools are getting excited about it. They're coming up with great ideas. We've had great success when we challenge kids and support them. And so teachers and their teams are getting excited about this. And the different schools, what I saw is a presentation where the different schools shared with each other what they did. And it was amazing because their school groups solved the problem themselves. Like, we encourage, like, we share the data. You get with your leadership teams and your buildings and your teachers that want to do this work. And they've come up with different plans to engage kids in their schools, which is kind of cool. It really meets their own schools' needs and their culture and flavor, if you will.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I'm just, is there any data on who fails AP classes? And I didn't send that in earlier, so you can.
Yeah, I could get back with you of the kids who struggle. And a D is not necessarily failing, but for us, success is A, B, or C.
Yeah, so I would be interested if you could, in a pre, in a future, not, it's not a rush.
Generally, what kids will do when it begins to get too tough, they'll try to transfer into a different, like, language class or something like that before the, before it gets to that point.
All right. Any other, oh, yes, member Wilson?
In an AP course, and I don't remember exactly, but if you receive like an A in an AP course, does that translate to a 4.0 or a higher GPA?
An A is a 5 point. And that's the encouragement of taking this course and going. So if you get a B because it's so hard, your GPA won't be affected. You can still get your 4.0. That's why when you hear, when you apply to colleges, they all go, they want to translate it back to four. But at least, you know, for high school, you can see. And that's why I like at graduations, you'll hear 4 point, whatever. But most colleges, you can send them your 5 point, but every transcript has to have a 4-point scale conversion. But what they do is look at what type of courses did you take? And colleges, I'm telling you, kids, they'd rather see a challenged student with a B than someone who coasts and takes la-la land through high school. Guarantee it.
All right. Okay, seeing no other questions, that concludes our tonight's conversation. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And at this point, we lost two board members. But at this point, I'd like to like for the board to approve the reports.
I move the board accept the report from the superintendent.
One second. Moved in second that the board accept the report from the superintendent. Katie, because we got some people out of the room. Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson? We're approving the report, sir. Thank you. And then I'll just say that president for Mr. Higgins. And President Bellin?
And that passes us 6 to 0 and one absent vote. So thank you, thank you very much. And now that brings us to item. Thank you. This is our public comment period. I'd just like to make a few comments before we get started. But I'd like to welcome you to our first public comment section. We provide opportunities twice during our meetings. Once at the beginning for an hour and once at the end for an hour for those individuals who sign up to testify, I mean, to provide public comment or testify on an agenda item, which is another process. So we welcome you to observe and participate in this part of our program. But to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. We conduct our meetings using Robert's Rules of Order, which is a set of rules for orderly meetings. And these rules have been used since the 1800s. So the rules require that the board and the public be civil, respectful of each other's opinions and statements. And I'd just like to do a few reminders. When you came into the boardroom, you would have seen a blue and white sheet, or you could have picked that up, that welcomes you to our boardroom as well as gives you audience participation guidelines and a few rules in our that we, that are in place in the boardroom. And some of those rules are to refrain from disturbing the meeting. That means no cheering, applause, or outbursts. No profanity, no foul language. And then, and of course, no waving of signs, flyers, or posters. If you do have handouts that you would like for the board to have, you may give them to Katie and she will distribute those to the board. So with that, as a president of the board, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. And as such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of the rules. And if necessary, after warnings, I will have removed, individuals removed from the board meeting if you fail to heed the rules or follow the rules. So with that foundation in mind, we'd like to welcome our, I got it here, I have it. First up, we have Mr. Martin Hanson in person. Welcome, Mr. Hanson. You have, you have three minutes, sir. It's on.
It's on, and I'm making it work.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I'm here to talk about Inlet View Elementary School. We all, that's, we all want Inlet View Elementary to be the best possible school for kids. The present design is not so good for kids. The two-story building on the south end of the lot that shades the sunny playing fields will be built on a seismically hazardous ground. And why put the kids at risk? And the playgrounds will be in the shade. And quite a bit of space is wasted for unnecessary parking spots. And I know they're unnecessary because on the days that I don't work, I work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at Willowas School, I go out and I count the people in the parking lot. And I'm getting, on a big day, 28 cars. On an average day, 23 or 24 cars. We have been assured that the proposed design meets meets the minimum, meets the minimum design requirements. I think we can do better than minimum. I was at the Urban Design Commission meeting last week. One commissioner commented that the proposed design looks like a mini high school. This was not a compliment. They also noted that the proposed design doesn't fit the neighborhood. And the Urban Design Committee again was also very concerned about the secret building design process that came up with the proposed building, a process that violated the Open Meetings Act. We want excellence. Ed Crichton, when designed the original Inlet View School, did an excellent job. Well, now it needs updating. And I believe, you know, when you tell me it needs updating, I believe it. But we don't have to start from scratch. ASD has already commissioned and received an excellent design, and it's by the same firm that has been working on the proposed design. This is it. And I must apologize for the quality of my home printer, but that's what I can do for you. This design that I'm showing you meets ASD's goals. The school gets the multipurpose room that they want. You get relocatables, and you get additional parking and parent drop-off. And it meets my, our neighborhood goals because the school's on the north end where it's safe and not shading the ground. Then I have a question for you. Do you know what the new school will cost to build as proposed? We know it's $31 million plus additional funds that ASD already has in store. I think this is something you should find out, and no neighborhood should have to go through what our neighborhood has.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Next, in person, we have David Hanson. Okay, thank you. Deborah Hanson. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Okay, thank you. Next, telephonically, we have Rebecca Hayden. Star six to unmute, Rebecca.
Hello, can you hear me?
Welcome, you have three minutes.
Okay, hello, esteemed board members and Dr. Bishop. My name is Rebecca Hayden. I have worked, worked to lead Begich Middle School and restorative practices for the last four years. The last two years have been a roller coaster ride for everyone. But regardless of where we have landed in this mess, no matter what criticisms we have faced or arguments we have had, we could all agree that mental health has taken a serious hit over the past several years. So great is that understanding that funding for it has been increased. Words like self-care and focused SEL have risen to the top of our collective agendas. It is an appropriate focus. I'm here to urge you to be thoughtful in its implementation and allocation. Simply put, having an SEL curriculum that is taught in every classroom is not enough. Being a trauma-informed district means that we understand that trauma affects students profoundly. It means that our response to students and the way that trauma affects them cannot and should not be limited to a classroom talk about values. To be blunt, every Title I school in this district should have a dedicated space for two qualified adults to run an intervention space for students who are chronically removed from their classrooms. Though reset rooms have been cropping up throughout the district at various middle schools, they are implemented with varying levels of fidelity due to funding. Because Begich has prioritized two adults within a restorative space, we are able to address student conflict in ways that other schools cannot. For example, I've been able to develop teacher professional development on handling conflicts within the classroom, talk to students while they are still in their feelings, and help them process through and reflect on their choices, mediate student conflict as well as student and teacher conflicts, and use suspension as an opportunity to provide targeted SEL and academic support. To say that we prioritize the mental health of our students but deny them access to actually work through their responses to classroom triggers outside of a punitive consequence is an absolute abdication of our responsibility. SEL belongs tethered to our disciplinary processes in every way. In fact, it is the very definition of equity within discipline. Inequity in discipline reaches far beyond statistics. It speaks to the space we create for all students to have the opportunity to learn and grow from their mistakes. Is that my timer?
No, you still have 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. If we do not provide Title I schools with the funding to house the space in these positions, we are simply not putting our money where our mouths are. To truly address mental health needs within our district, we must look at how we address student discipline. Why? Because trauma affects our behaviors, and behaviors that are manifested inside the classroom are complex and in need of wraparound support. I'm asking you to give Title I students the opportunity to pick up the pieces and find a way to thrive, but it will require money.
Thank you. Next, telephonically, we have Manuel Acuña. Acuna? Acuna, Acuna. Acuna. Manuel? Star six to unmute.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Manuel Acuna. I am the Academic Policy Committee Treasurer for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, or ANCCS for short. ANCCS needs a new building, and we are in the midst of a capital building campaign fundraising project. You are well aware that ANCCS had to relocate to Betty Davis East High due to building code safety concerns in its Begrall building. This happened during the pandemic. However, our students and staff's safety and well-being is our number one priority, so staying at the old Begrall location was not an option. Thank you for housing ANCCS at Betty Davis East High. While we are grateful to the high school and the Anchorage School District, it is not the place for our students. Kindergarteners do not belong on a high school campus. The current location is negatively impacting our school's cultural mission and student success. Some examples of this are violent activities, police call-outs, school lockdowns on the high school campus, limited space for all students and staff, no playground or gym, no cafeteria. The children have to eat in their classrooms, and parents are stating they do not want their children on a high school campus. These are trying times for ANCCS, but we are resilient and continue to prevail. ANCCS is the only Title I charter school in the Anchorage School District. We cannot fail since so many families depend on ANCCS. Yet, ANCCS is so much more than just a school for children. Our students, staff, and families' determination and dedication are testaments for that. In fall of 2021, ANCCS families hosted two grassroots events that raised about $3,000. In January, we hosted a school open house. A generous visitor to that event donated about $5,000. Together, this has provided seed money for a larger fundraising event. Now, ANCCS, in collaboration with our nonprofit Friends of ANCCS, is hosting our most aggressive fundraising endeavor to date, a spring fundraising event on Friday, May 6th, at the Alaska Native Heritage Center. A newly energized board is focused on raising funds for an awareness of our school's need for a new building. This fundraising effort is pivotal for ANCCS and is a significant undertaking. In closing, I would like to say that ANCCS needs to be in an appropriate building for its students, one that provides a healthy and safe learning environment for our children. There is still so much to do, but the future is bright and our goals are only possible with the help of our partners and champions. We can't do this alone. Our families and our students are counting on us. We need support from the Anchorage School District. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Acuna. Next, we have, telephonically, we have Danielle Kemp. I don't see him in the queue. Okay, that concludes our public comments section. So now we, that brings us to our consent agenda, item E.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as listed, memorandum number 076, and acceptance of, we already have, we've already done guardrail number four. Katie, is that correct?
Madam President, may I ask, there are some visitors here. May I ask Dr. Bishop to please introduce them at this time?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. With us today, because I see in the audience, are two of our new principals. And I was so happy to interview them recently and make the final selection as, I just, thank you for this timing for, apropos for the personnel report. So first, I will share with you, Mr. Chris Bernosky. And he is ASD's, and he's getting an applaud back there, air hands. I think it's not public testimony, you can go ahead and do it. No, come on up, Chris. And I always share with them a little bit to share about themselves so that when you visit their school, you'll, you'll know who they are. And Chris has been with our district for quite some time. He actually has been the acting principal since mid-year at Central. So, Chris.
Thank you very much. I'd like to offer a warmly-distanced handshake. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I very much appreciate it. I am Chris Bernosky. I am the newly-minted principal for Central Middle School of Science. Again, centrally located, it's a fantastic school. Centrally located, it's close to downtown shopping and dining. So if anybody is looking for a new school to attend, the lottery closes on the 17th, we'd love to have you. But in all seriousness, I mean, tremendously excited for the wonderful opportunity that that, being the principal is because, like most schools, we were, you know, hit by the pandemic. But what we've done is kind of grown like phoenix from that hit, and we've actually been able to kind of look forward to a new and better future. We have definitely started to implement new classes in math, language arts, and career and technical education. So we've actually kind of redesigned and revamped our master schedule, so we're moving forward from there. And so just tremendously excited for the opportunity that I've been presented with. And in regards to that, I'd like to thank any of my families, students, and staff that are watching because you gave me purpose and I appreciate that. So thank you for that. I'd also like to thank Dr. Bishop, Dr. Johnson, and Directors Zawadny for their faith in me. So again, thank you three. I greatly appreciate that. And hopefully that faith is well put, and I can earn that from the board as well. So just thank you very much to all involved, and I do appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Yep, and these, these guys are the real McCoy. When they get to my level, the questions are a little bit non-traditional. And so I really tried to get their plans and their vision for the future of our students. And certainly, Chris had already been working on that. And so I wasn't able to take him off-guard, and he shared his work ever since even being an acting of how they're remapping.
Yes.
I have a comment, not a question. I was, I'm, was at your school with the School Business Partnership Board when your SVP class presented to us. They did a phenomenal job. The students were amazing. I appreciate you hosting that, so, yeah, fantastic group. Thank you.
And recently got a $3,000 grant by the hard work of those students, so.
Excellent. And his number one fan is in the audience, we'll just say that.
And I'd also like to thank my wife.
You did miss it. You said families, but I didn't know whether they're schools. Behind every good principal is a support system. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll give them, there you go. And next, coming up, you will see Lisa Mounds Craft, who also, because of some changes that we made at East High affected SAVE. We took Lisa out of South and asked her to cover for us. And she, from a very traditional school, she fell in love with the mission of SAVE. And so may I present to you Lisa Mounds Craft, principal of SAVE High School.
Hello, hello, hello. You know what? I actually feel like I'm at the Academy Awards. Like, I've won this award and I'm accepting it. And I was not expecting to speak, but I want to say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be the new principal at SAVE. And we are now the Mountaineers because we climb to the top and we bring people along with us to be successful in school and reach their goals. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Johnson and Chris Bjornston and Dr. Bishop, of course. I don't know, eventually she might tell you about a bidding war we had over a coat a couple of weeks ago at the Miss America event. So it's really been a fantastic journey being at SAVE this year and just learning about the kids and the community and what their needs are and what we can do to get them to where they want to be and need to be to be productive members of our community. And they are absolutely amazing. I'm going to say hi to the staff. They get up every day ready to rock it for our kids. And so I would not be where I am today if it wasn't for the faith that you all put in me as well as the staff and the students at SAVE High School, and of course, my family.
And I know your mama is real proud.
Oh, yes, my mother is very proud as well. So thank you for giving me the award of being the principal at SAVE High School. I gladly accept it, and I will work hard in your honor, and I won't let you down.
Absolutely.
So that's what I wanted to say, and it's very good to see you.
Homegrown also.
Homegrown, absolutely.
I still see you as a 12-year-old.
Yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Ms. Bellamy has been with me along my journey as well. She actually interviewed me for my very first job in ASD. I don't know if you remember that.
Of course I do.
And so I ended up getting a job at Clark Middle School as the Career Resource Advisor. And so Ms. Bellamy was there to onboard me. So I'm in it to win it, and I'm here to stay.
All right.
Thank you.
You have a question? Not so fast.
I have, just a remark, a comment. As a brand-new board member, I had the opportunity to say my sentence at the South High School graduation last spring. And I was really impressed at how many students' names you knew well and well enough to give them hugs. And that stayed with me.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Of course, Ellie, you may say something.
So I also, she was there when my, both my siblings went through South. We've been there almost 10, 13 years. And she's been with us every, almost every step of the way. So she really did make an impact on our school. Like, I know when she came in and did a woman's.
International Day.
Yeah, I don't know, it was like a panel. You know, I had, it was there, and I had one of those students come up. He was all like, Ms. Mounds Craft's here, like freaking out. Like, we were all just so excited to just like have her back in the building for those who knew her. So I know for sure she made an impact in South, and we miss her.
I know.
Appreciate that.
Very nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Absolutely, congratulations.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
And you guys, you could be excused. You don't have to stay. You guys can go out to dinner or something.
Okay. So now, it's been moved a second, and of course, congratulations were in order to, um, to approve our action items, which is our personnel report and our monitoring. Oh, yes. Can everybody vote?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda. It was moved in second. I think you were out of the room when that happened. Okay, but you, you've already voted, okay? Yeah, we just, we just took a little time to, yeah, consent. We, we kind of took a little. Okay. Has everybody voted? Okay. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us now to item F, action items. If we can get a motion, and then we'll see if there's any, we have a couple of people signed up.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 086, the adoption of spring board published by the College Board as the English Language Arts/Literacy Program for grades nine and 10.
Second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number 086. Let's see, we have several people signed up for public comment. In person, we have Rita Shannon. Rita Shannon, hi, welcome. And you have three minutes. And turn, yeah, the mic's on.
Greetings and good evening to Superintendent Bishop, President Bellamy, and school board members. My name is Rita Shannon, and I would like to address ASD memorandum 086, grades nine and 10 ELA materials adoption. I'm a proud educator working under the tutelage of Principal Cicely Williams at Aura D. Clark Middle School as an English Language Arts teacher. Tonight, I wanted to address the springboard curriculum that we had the opportunity to pilot in 2019. We also had the privilege to be trained face-to-face with the springboard instructors to implement the curriculum with fidelity. This curriculum allows teachers to make correlations in the lessons with activities and applicable standards for college and career readiness. Within the curriculum are also skills workshops. It assists our students with addressing the needs of unfinished learning. This additional resource specifically caters to the inclusion practices considering accommodations and modifications that we are currently implementing with Dr. Sharon Azar. The springboard curriculum provides our students with rigorous instruction, learning choices, collaboration, and higher-level thinking so we can meet the needs of all learners. learning choices, collaboration and higher level thinking so we can meet the needs of all learners. The college and career readiness standards addressed in Springboard specifically speak to our data dashboard goals and guardrails that we might increase our college and career readiness to 90% for 2026. The rubrics provided for each assessment gives students a bird's eye view of the requirements to complete exemplary and proficient work. These opportunities for exposure to higher level thinking continue to prepare our scholars for high school and college work. I am specifically in support of this curriculum because it is provided in both the written and digital format. Springboard provides applicable content to bridge the gaps in our unfinished learning and yet continue to move our students forward. The recursive manner in which the curriculum is designed provides students with a constant review for content mastery. Because we are still working to improve our test scores and educate all students for success in life, it is necessary that as students utilize the Springboard curriculum in middle school, that they continue to use it in high school to continue the forward momentum of grade level content mastery and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next in person, we have Kevin Klot. Welcome, Kevin. And you have three minutes.
All right. Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Bishop. My name's Kevin Klot and I'm a seventh grade language arts teacher at Goldenview Middle School. I'm here this evening to voice my support for the adoption of Springboard for ninth and 10th grade English. Tonight, I bring no data to back up my support. All I have is my Springboard story. Four years ago, I volunteered to serve on the Curriculum Committee for Middle School Language Arts. In the end, after selecting Springboard, Goldenview Language Arts teachers were onboarded to serve as one of the pilot schools for this new curriculum. As Language Arts Department Chair, I was a little nervous, not knowing what we were getting ourselves into. Many of us in the department had concerns that naturally come with teaching something new. Would we receive professional development? Would we receive our materials on time? Would it be engaging for learners of multiple ability levels? Would we be able to continue to teach novels? Well, we're now at the tail end of our third year of using Springboard and I can honestly report that our questions and concerns have been answered with positive outcomes. Of course, teaching with Springboard will always be a work in progress. Each year, we are learning how to better integrate it with Canvas, how to enrich the curriculum with Springboard digital tools and how to better manage the workbooks that students receive. Any Goldenview Language Arts teacher will tell you that our Springboard success stems from the collaboration time we received during our pilot year. Our counselors were able to align our collaboration time, which allowed us to meet regularly throughout the week. The time we used to collaborate helped us create a solid foundation that we still use today. In addition to the collaboration time, it's also important to note that Springboard has a treasure chest of online resources that can be used to improve reading and writing skills for all learners. Whether it's a student who needs tier one, tier two, tier three supports, there's something in there for everyone. This year, I've been fortunate to co-teach Springboard Intensified, which is a class of learners who need a significant amount of support in reading and writing. Together, my co-teacher and I deliver the same content that my advanced students receive and it's absolutely amazing to see these students shine. From my perspective, the advantage of adopting this curriculum for ninth and 10th grade boils down to two things. It allows our middle school and high school English departments to finally have alignment in our learning targets and objectives. And more importantly, this alignment would be able to provide even more hope and opportunity for all middle school learners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klot. And telephonically, we have Danielle Kemp.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes. We're testifying on memorandum number 086.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the boards for having me here tonight. My name is Danielle Kemp. I am a retired Army Combat Officer, teacher here in the ASD, a parent of two ASD kiddos. I'm also the president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of Five Pocket Educators. And that's why I'm testifying tonight on behalf of, not just myself, but also on behalf of the ACBE when I say that we are in favor of passage of memo 86 and ASD's recommendation to approve the adoption of Springboard published by the College Board as the English Language Arts Literacy Program for grades nine and 10. This curriculum, we believe, is well constructed. I sat down and read as much as I could with the four hours that I was allotted, maybe four to six hours. I believe I saw IU Causa talk that night. Matter of fact, we ran into each other reviewing the same curriculum. But yes, I must say that the curriculum is well constructed. However, we must mention that it is not without one glaring flaw. There are two main texts used in the ninth grade curriculum, Romeo and Juliet by William Shakespeare and To Kill a Mockingbird by Harper Lee. Two great novels, no doubt, all right? But we feel it would have been best for one of those two authors to have been a person of color. All right, there are plenty of good works by authors of color to choose from. Toni Morrison, James Baldwin, I could go on and on and on, okay? But you kind of get the point, right? Which really kind of makes that choice a little bit perplexing. But regardless, we still do recommend that you pass this. But please consider diversifying the main text used in those curriculums for next time. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. That ends our community members wishing to speak on memorandum 086. And now it's on, what is the will of the board? Member Higgins.
I just want to speak briefly to it because I had the chance to talk to some of the, a couple of teachers who were in opposition to this. I was kind of curious what they had, concerns they had in regards to it. And, and it was, it was concerning because not necessarily that the merits of the change isn't there. You know, I'm not in a position to evaluate that completely. I listened to concerns in regards to flexibility and other issues that are there. But Council of Great City Schools did study in regards to a couple of failed programs that we had implemented in the school district or attempted to. One was everyday math, but there was others. And, and they said there were two things that were critical for success of any new curriculum. You needed to have buy-in in the beginning and you needed to make sure that you had adequate training and support when you did roll it out. So you had to have both. What I got here was concerns from teachers strongly in regards to the issue. There were some, some a little bit emotional in regards to concerns. And like I said, I don't know the merits of that. I'm not in a good position to evaluate it. But probably the most concerning part was that when they expressed those concerns, they were kind of stifled a little bit. There, there was unwelcome, unwanted type feedback that was killing the communications. That's what they were most concerned about too, that there wasn't an open discussion and it wasn't free. I haven't had a chance to talk to the others that were in opposition. Unfortunately, I was traveling here for a little bit and, and I regret that. But it is a concern to me of rolling it out completely right now and the timing of, of changing administration to other issues that are out there, simply because of the buy-in issue. Not that it's not maybe a good program and I'm not able to assess that, but I am concerned about the buy-in. I am concerned that Council of Great City Schools, I think was accurate. They had consultants come in from other large school districts. It wasn't staff from the Council of Great City Schools. But they were pretty adamant about it. They're not going, you're, you're taking a high risk if you don't get that buy-in before you start rolling it out. And what I heard was a lot of opposition. And I don't know from a, the other part is how much we're going to be able to invest in the training to really help them be successful. Because without that, that also would, would bring it down. And I don't know if we've committed the resources and all that to do that, to make sure it's successful. So I have concerns right now about it. Personally, I would prefer to postpone it for, you know, at least as a school board member. So I could listen to whatever else they said and other school board members could too. But I don't think issue, but the buy-in is important and the commitment for the amount of training we need to do to make sure that we roll it out so it's successful can make a good program fail. And that's what I'm concerned about at this point.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop, would you like to respond?
Thank you. I'll begin with a response and certainly we want those things too. And I think serendipitously you heard someone who probably wasn't necessarily in favor of doing something new, but felt supported. It's not without being difficult work. And in the selection of curriculum, we do utilize our experts, not just in what we want, but in, in really looking at what we need and, and try to balance those things about need, kids' needs and what would be successful. We have had pilot programs already in the high school. They're using it right now. And what we do when we implement is learn from those, learn, and then you can adjust and then, you know, reshare out, similar to, really, it's teacher leadership in regard to implementation at the school level occurs also at the district level. And I'll just punt it to Dr. Stock who's worked with this in regard to the supports. I'm not concerned. I think that we've had success with Springboard and Springboard was a big change from what we've done before, huge in middle school. And so the fact that our middle school could be so successful, and if you look of anyone really making good gains, like sizable gains, that it's those guys. It's middle school teachers and so in this area. And it's delightful to know and it, it sets up the next level. So I'll let Mark respond, but I don't have any reservations whether I'm here or not in regard to this. Because I know that the, the success of students depends on the success of our teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I think I'd like to first just address the concept of process. You know, the last board meeting under non-action, I think the only questions I really heard from the board was about the process of that. And I've been doing curriculum adoptions for 30 years. I never had one that was unanimous, ever. Whenever you put 20 or 50 or 100 folks in a room and really get them to dig in and ask their opinion, opinions vary and that's what makes America great. I mean, we, we all have different opinions. But eventually you have to really get down to the need and what the students need and then what's the best decision. And so I don't know if we have the copy of the rubric that was used the last time because that's your best.
It's still up here on, on the, in front of the podium.
Oh, yeah, okay. So that rubric had four distinct things that the very teachers who felt like they were kind of split on what they wanted to do. But the rubric talks about alignment with our standards and, and there are national and Alaska standards and the alignment. So people rated that. And then the other one was shifting in the standards and the things that are going on in our industry. Talked about reading text, text-based evidence and so on, academic vocabulary, all things which are aligned with our college and career preparatory work. The third dimension talked about responsive to the different learning needs. And I think one of our teachers spoke to that tonight in terms of the six, seven and eight model, which is, we're just recommending be extended into nine and 10 as a continuation. And the fourth one was about mastering and whether or not students are being assessed over those things and whether we can monitor those items. And so I think another thing I really wanted to point out that is really critical to me and that is that we're doing a deep dive right now on some of our academic issues and some of the underlying root causes. And one of the number one effects we're noticing and we, is the effects of inner district student mobility on students. And, and as we're doing a deep dive on it, we asked Hanover Research to provide us best practices across the country. And that came in last week. We've been poring through it. One of the number one solutions for districts who have student performance problems being exacerbated by high levels of student mobility within a district is that we provide a scope and sequence and a set of activities and courses that build on one another. So as students move and change and make different options, they aren't starting completely over. And so it is our recommendation that we extend Springboard from six, seven and eight into nine and 10. It's being piloted in Service High School now. I think one of the letters that was in your written documents that's in your board docs is from a teacher at Service, I believe, who's been piloting it. So it is our recommendation that we would approve this and continue the great work that we've already got started.
Other comments? So I, I would, just the opposite of, I'm sorry, did I go too fast? Did I, did I ignore you? I'm sorry. I, I need to wait. I'll wait. So Member Wilson and then Member Lessons. And then I'll, I'll come back. I didn't see your hands, I'm sorry.
So I, I just wanted to comment and actually Mr. Mark Stock also commented about the same thing. I, I did not have conversation as Mr., or Member Higgins did with folks that, staff members that had issues with Springboard. I actually had the opposite conversation with staff members that were in support of it. And part of it was the conversation with middle as well as high school staff and the consistency and familiarity of the curriculum affects the student outcomes. So I, I believe, Mark, you mentioned that students going from middle school to high school, it, it can be a very difficult transition, but having to relearn and relearn the style of curriculum for any of their classes can be more difficult for some than others. So it's really important, as I see it, for that curriculum to, to have some consistency and familiarity for the students. And I, I do also appreciate the folks that testified tonight. I, I did hear a couple other aspects of it. Treasure chest of online resources is what I've heard. And in this day and age, it's really nice to have those resources associated with the curriculum that our students are being provided at school so that families or the students themselves can access some additional support, even if it's on their own, ideally get some support with, with that as well. And then the alignment and learning targets and objectives. And along with that, I added the potential for collaboration. So I saw some very positive things in extending the curriculum to ninth and 10.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Member Lessons.
I think I'll begin, well, where do I begin? I appreciated the feedback that we received online and in person tonight. I appreciate, I feel, I'll, I'll begin where I'm at, which is I think that I'm comfortable with the pilot next year and would love to see the time for collaboration for the pilot faculty so that they can be supported as they take on this new endeavor. I might, I had a chance to look at the Springboard materials earlier today, which for me is a valuable opportunity. And I remarked to Ms. Diane Orr that it's a humbling experience. It's a reminder of how much I know as an adult and all the steps that are required to get to that point of being a fluent reader, of understanding and argumentative writing versus, I don't know, just different, different constructs. You know, how do we know what we know? So it was a good reminder of the work that needs to go in to get to that point in time. Having taught undergraduates, I'm a little concerned about broken up texts. I think that sometimes college students can struggle with a sizable book and a requirement to be able to read the whole book and be able to synthesize that material. And when, like in the English one curriculum, you get a section of Romeo and Juliet or a section of To Kill a Mockingbird, you don't get that immersive experience. You don't get to really engage with a character development, the plotline. You don't develop the same sense of, I don't know, empathy with the characters' experiences. And I think that it looked like that the English, to the 10th grade materials. And I think that it looked like that the English, the 10th grade materials did a little bit more in that regard. That was my, that's one of my concerns is a reliance on excerpts versus a whole piece of writing. But maybe that's not my role as a board member to pick and choose and design. That's why we have curricular specialists. But I want to just be open and honest with my thought process and some of the areas I have that I was concerned of. I also, I still don't know that we've seen an actual cost estimate. So I, maybe that would be an important piece of information so that the board and the public knows what the purchase of this curricular plan.
Sure. I can address that. And for the additional pilot schools that have stepped forward and want to do this, it's Bartlett, East, South and Chugiak. And you're concerned about the curriculum actually. So that you know, junior, senior year, kids get to elect to be in it. And actually, the research is strong in regard to pulling out excerpts from novels because the opposite is that is students not having any content in it because they have no access. They don't have the skills as a teacher taught here that the content, whether I'm gifted or not, I'm going to get the same time while I'm building my skills. And what we've done in the past is if you can't actually function through a whole entire novel, you lose. And so the academic rigor and research is behind as students are growing and learning how to break apart literature is actually to do it in chunks. So it's, it's with good science. They're not college kids. They're learning and we want them to be successful in college, but if I'm a freshman and I fail English, my whole rest of my high school is really messed up. And it's very hard to regain failing in English or any core course as a freshman. So it's actually purposefully and scientifically with evidence doing the opposite. But that's K-12, not college, of course. Okay. I have a number. That was a great question, Member Lessons, and I just hit my thing. Seventy-five thousand for the pilot next year and it's already covered in the teaching and learning budget. We had a placeholder there.
Thank you. Member Jacobs.
Thank you. Madam President, a question for the administration. We had testimony earlier regarding the selection of texts. Where in the ASD hierarchy are, is there room for selecting the texts that are used as part of the curriculum, the excerpts that are mentioned?
I'll defer to Dr. Knutson, who runs these things.
Could you repeat that question? Thank you.
So we had a testimony regarding the texts specifically that were used and so my question boils down to where is there choice, options for choice in the ASD hierarchy? Is it the administration level, a school level, a classroom level as to what texts are used and what excerpts are presented to the students?
Yeah. So through the President and Member Jacobs, we can look at that as, as a curriculum team when we're adopting a curriculum about what novels and what texts we use. There's also the ability, if there's a concern, to do a replacement novel or text if that is a concern for a parent. And we do that quite regularly.
Follow up, Member Jacobs.
So just to understand then, as part of adopting the curriculum, we're also selecting the texts that are used at this point?
No. Okay. So in the springboard curriculum, there are excerpts in of different novels in the curriculum. There are also novels that kids read. So they do have the opportunity to read full novels as well, just not, that's the only way they do it because they take a deep dive. So as we're looking at it, we would take the curriculum what it is, but if there is a novel that someone doesn't want to read or if there's concern with it, we can replace it with a different novel when they do the novel studies.
My understanding is there is a list of novels per grade level. How is that list created, I think is your question?
Yeah.
And what's the input in getting into that novel list per grade level? And we have them per grade level and this is like a sacred thing because it really messes up an 11th grade teacher when a ninth grade teacher reads that novel from that list. So they really are defined. But if the goal is to have more novels by diverse authors, it would basically go back to teaching and learning and the core group who studied the English, the experts in English, the chairs, is that what we call them? Yeah. They would get together and make, carry out that request.
So there is opportunity to, to really do different novels if the school chooses to, the team chooses to.
Correct. Okay. And then after you, I'm going to say my comment because you guys taking all the good stuff. Go on.
All right. Well, I was going to say, I think that I flipped today to a page of the ninth curriculum with the, had a list of, of the novels and I was actually really impressed by the number of contemporary pieces that are, I mean, going up to 2016, 17, 18-ish. So very recently published materials. And there were some listed that were in Spanish and there was a special note that said, you know, for some of our, you know, for Spanish, for students whose language is, first language is Spanish, they would benefit, they may benefit from practicing that fluency in, in Spanish as a course of action. So I thought that that was remarkable, actually. I had one question, which was what happens if a class gets really interested in a topic? Let's just say it's a speech by JFK and wants to do a deeper dive and like, wow, we really need to talk more about this speech by JFK and take an extra day or two. Is that something that's allowable, permissible?
Yeah. When we talk about guaranteed and viable curriculum, what can be guaranteed to all kids is set in there at about, so the plan, if you will, is about 80% of what kids should learn according to the standards is, is built in to a plan, academic plan. And about 20% is however, you know, whatever you want to add to that or take off to a different topic. But those guaranteed and viable relate back to the standards and then the teachers have, of course, freedom within the standards, but also freedom of time. I think the deeper dive would be the time. And so 20% of a year is actually not part of those standards.
So I just want to share, I'm very familiar with the work that's being done at Clark with, I visit there quite often and I, so from the middle school level, I, I just love the curriculum. And it makes sense to me for it to continue into grades nine and 10, just for consistency and alignment. It's, and I'm going to quote one of our speakers tonight, it's not just about bridging gaps, it's about bridging those gaps and keeping moving and making sure that kids are, kids are on track and are benefiting. So I have spoken to teachers about, at the high school level in, at Bartlett. I only knew that it was Bartlett and East that had pilots. I didn't know about, is it Chugiak and South?
Next year, we'll add on Chugiak and South.
Next year, okay. So I did not get any negative comments. I got, well, if it's good for kids, that's what I got from teachers. It wasn't whether they liked it, they agreed with it, they had buy-in. It was if it's going to be good for kids, then I'm willing to do it. And so for me, that's pretty powerful coming from, we're asking teachers and have been asking teachers to do Herculean things. This is just another one of those things. But they, I never got any opposition, no, I don't want to do it or no, they don't, they don't understand. I just got, it'll, it'll be different. But I agree with Mr. Higgins that having the resources and the collaboration, those were the terms that came up for me. So if you could talk a little bit more, Dr. Bishop did some, if you could talk a little bit more about the resources and the collaborative piece.
Yeah. And I really appreciate that comment by you and Mr. Higgins because really the, the supports we provide staff is really what makes it a racket to what our testimony told us tonight. One of the really nice things at high school is we have professional learning communities, PLC time built into the day. So there is that time that they can do once a week where they're going to be doing collaboration. So that is a time period where they can start digging into the materials, having those questions about the instruction. So that is a piece of it that high schools will have that's similar to what you heard from the middle school experience. And so that will be utilized. Both schools that are, all the schools that are piloting have strong programs with that. So that's one thing. The PD that comes with the initial training to build knowledge and skills about the materials and the new pedagogy through college board is very robust. And so that's what we'll be building into the beginning of next year. That is why we've changed our practices since everyday math so that we do pilots. The ability to do a pilot where we're working with a few schools allows us to work through some of those issues and figure out how much or how little support schools are going to need to do this well for kids. So this year or the last couple of years, you'll hear that service has been doing it. That was part of a reading grant that we had. So they really taught us what is needed to implement this at a high school level. What should we do? What shouldn't we do? From there, Bartlett and East dabbled in it and did some piloting with it over the last couple of years now. It's a unique time with the pandemic, so they didn't get to implement it the way they wanted to. But next year, they'll be able to really dig in like service did when they started it. And adding on South and Chugiak allows us to have a couple non-title schools and a couple title schools to figure out with the range of needs and skills with kids, how do we need to support teachers? So really that collaboration time and starting slow to do it right. So we're not just going across all eight high schools all at once, trying to do it all. Our capacity to help support people is at this pacing of rolling it out. And that's really what I think is going to be successful. It's what's been successful in our last two adoptions with springboard and middle school as well as the math program at elementary is that pacing has changed to what Mr. Klot said, making sure teachers have the materials before the school year starts. So we've shifted to ensure that teachers get it before the end of this school year so that if they want to look at it over the summer and stuff, they aren't coming in cold at the beginning of the school year. So having those materials and that's why it's important. If this is passed, we can now get on ordering materials and have that in place for teachers before they leave for the summer and even do a little bit of work with them so they can be familiar with it as well as getting them access to the online tools. And so that, those are some of the things that we do to really support teachers and we've learned over time and we've changed our practices due to that.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Yeah. Member Lessons.
This is maybe a process question and maybe we should defer this to a little bit further down the road, but how can we improve the community input piece? We sort of danced around this a little bit last week. Maybe can we have a little bit of that conversation now? I mean, what, what are some ways that we can improve community awareness of curricular adoption, of the curricular adoption process, opportunities for people to sit down and look through things? Are there limits to that right now?
I would, I welcome any feedback and support that we can get and how we better involve the community and give, get people to be able to come and see the material. So we are definitely open to having that conversation and learning from each other on how to do that because that is a tricky thing. We have multiple opportunities, different times a day. It's really hard to, to get people to come in. We, we, having that extra session really helped. We had more people come in, but it's still only a handful of folks. So we would love to engage in a conversation is how do we get more community involvement and hearing from our community and what works for them? That will continuously improve our process and we do want that input from, I mean, as a parent with two kids that have gone through the ASD, I would love to sit down and look at curriculum that my children are, are going to be getting, just knowing what that is and talking to our community and figuring out ways that we can do that. I think that's an area we can grow in.
Okay. So I'm going to, I don't see any more hands. I'm going to call for the vote.
Would you have online voting because everyone is here?
Yes. Student vote? All right. Thank you. That passed us unanimously. Thank you. We are now at item G, which is our non-action items. They will come back to you next, in two weeks. We have no public testimony on any of the, or comment on any of those. And none have been pulled. Moving on to item H, we have no additional public comment. And now Dr. Bishop, superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to take this time to defer to Chief Operations Officer Tom Roth to just share an update on Orion's roof with the board. It's good news and I'm going to turn it over to him. I sent this out in an address last week when we went into some, some trouble.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through, through the president to, to the board. So just to very briefly recap, it was a week ago today, in fact, that we had maintenance staff enter the, the roof of Orion Elementary and they, they discovered at that time that a portion of the roof, the steel structural frame of a roof that had recently been replaced had collapsed or partially compressed under the weight of the snow load. Once, once that was reported, CPNC and, and maintenance, as well as the, the designer, record and structural engineer went on site to immediately assess the, the damage and then look at, you know, what was necessary to make safe that structure. So fast forward over the last several, several days, once, once it was discovered, fortunately occurred during the spring break, but the, the district through the purchasing warehouse staff relocated the, any, any class or activity that was in specifically the west wing of the Orion building to other portions of the school. That, that, that occurred over the weekend. But it was also identified that we, we could approach this in two phases. First, we, we weren't really at risk of the roof imploding or collapsing. It was a portion of roof that was actually a, a roof that was built on top of the existing roof. So what was decided for a recovery was to, to shore up the existing roof structure. So that process was completed today. Roger Hickel, with the supervision of both the designer of record and the structural engineer for the project, as well as our own term structural engineer, went out and certified that work today. So Orion is assessed by them to be safe for occupation. However, it's the principal's intent to, to keep the, the programs that were relocated where they are through the remainder of the school year. So that was recovery. Our next step at this point is to look at repairs. We are still in the process of, of doing that evaluation of what it's going to take to, to repair that roof system so we don't have a similar issue in the future where it fails under load. So with that, Dr. Bishop, I'll hand back for, for any questions.
And with that, part of next steps has been in discussions with, as he said, the designer. And they understand that it was the, the design of the roof on the roof that was the issue. And so just working through those channels to ensure that it's, it's rebuilt and redone and, you know, just working through those processes there. But there isn't any fear of danger, harm to students, staff. It is strictly now that we want to recover all funds. we want to recover all funds and get that roof squared away to where it should be.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Yes, Member Holloman.
I was just curious how the failure was discovered. I'm always fascinated by that.
Routine work of maintenance, checking out schools?
It was visual detection, just, just as the superintendent described, routine maintenance, they, they went into this portion of the building, it, it's actually easily accessible, you can walk up a stairwell to get into this portion, and that's where they visually identified the, the matter.
And not that maintenance and operation loves it when school's not out, but they get a whole lot done when teachers and students aren't in the buildings. So this is their busy, extra hour time during spring breaks, Christmases, and summers.
Other questions? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. So if I'm reading between the lines, if there were design deficiencies, does that mean our vision for cost is that we won't have to pay significant amount out of pocket?
We, that's a great question, through the President, to Member Jacobs. Our goal is to recover all funds as well as have it fixed by, because it was structural and there, you know, lawyers will get involved, but there was confirmation that it was a design flaw. So we feel very confident with that. Would you concur, Mr. Roth?
Through, through the President, yes, Dr. Bishop, I concur with that.
Any other questions, comments?
And Madam President, that wasn't to disparage any lawyer that's sitting at the table.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Moving on to J, School Board and Administration comments. Which side wants, where do we want to start? Carl's going to take it. We punt it to Carl. Get us started, Carl.
I will be brief, Madam President, so not to let anyone off the hook. Wanted to thank those who came out to testify this evening and express their thoughts and opinions, always appreciate and respect folks who are willing to take timeouts. Other board on the record meetings that are public include the, the Communications and Governance Committee meetings tomorrow at 3:30 and 4:30, and Finance on the 23rd at noon. And I'm looking forward to the SAB meeting on the 22nd. We'll see you folks next time, thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Member Donley?
Okay, inflation is not temporary. Buying oil from Iran and Hezbollah is a bad idea. We need to restore domestic oil production, and Vladimir Putin is a war criminal.
I missed that last part.
President Putin of Russia is a war criminal.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Member Lessons?
I wanted to share really a shout out to our music teachers. I had the opportunity two weeks ago to be at two different music events, both at West High School and South High School, celebrating the work of students, many of whom have never played an instrument before this year. And I got to ask the assembled elementary students at South High School, you know, how many of you just learned this year? And 80 or 90% of their hands shot up. And then I got to continue asking questions, and there are some students within the ASD system, they were timpani players, but they have learned seven, eight, nine, 10 or more instruments during their time at ASD, and it was just a really remarkable opportunity to celebrate work that is maybe harder to capture in data, but it was a full auditorium, and it was, both nights were wonderful opportunities to celebrate the arts in ASD.
Well, thank you. Yes.
Madam President, actually, you can put that in data. The success of our students, I would say, we had a report that almost 75% of the students in ASD experience playing an instrument. All of them have experienced by graduation being in music classes, and there is a strong correlation, just like there is sports and other things and activities and debate, that when you participate, it does bring higher graduation rates. So the arts are important in ASD.
They are. Thank you. Ms. Shaw, do you have any closing comments?
Sure. I got to have a nice phone call with Mr. Michael Collins from the Rain Associates Group in Ohio.
Yes.
So him, him and I got to talk a little bit, which was really nice, because I'm on the Superintendent's Search Committee, I just wasn't getting any of the emails, so I got to talk with him, which was really nice, so hoping to get more involved with that and get into that process to just share the student voice, you know? I know, all the Big Eight high schools plan a prom, South has their soapbox on next Friday. Pumped. Busy week, busy fourth quarter, but I think it's, it's going to be good for a lot of these high schools, that's, we're excited to get back into these events, and I'm excited to hear from SAB and see how the middle schoolers are also, you know, most of them are doing eighth grade tours, going to go to the high school, so looking forward to getting to talk with them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Member Wilson?
I had the opportunity to be a panelist for the Points of Light Youth Leadership Institute, and some Anchorage students were there, Anchorage School District students were there, as well as students from around the state, and actually a few from New York, which was pretty darn cool. I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to our community partners and organizations that invest in our students and our, all of our kids.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Holloman?
Fell victim to the age-old thing, if you say something nice about someone, you might get invited to come visit them. So I was at Polaris K-12 after their recent presentation here, and they're in the midst of gathering the information they need to bring a name change for part of their building to the board, but they are absolutely canvassing everybody in the building first for feedback and watching them, it's not so much watching them explain Robert's Rules of Orders to third graders, but the questions that third graders have, and how meticulous a third grader can be about making sure they're getting this right. They've, they've got a long resolution that was the reasons for the name change, and they, they want to get feedback from every class, and doing it in a way really to not prejudice the feedback they get. It was, it was neat to watch what they're going through, and I'm sure they'll have an excellent presentation when they finally come to us, so.
Great, thank you, Member Holloman.
Also, I do want to say, this is the right time of year to accept invitations to musical events. Do not go in September or October ever, but this time of year is awesome.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
That might be a little better. I had the privilege of addressing Rotary Club this morning. Only thing not great about it was 7:00 AM, but we'll go past that one, but I woke up in time, and there were two things that came out of there that I thought I'd share. One was back to the administration in regards to the bonds, and they were contractors there as well, and just the inflationary factors that might be there, and when we get the dirt, when we get the shovel in the, in the ground, if we win the bonds, and how the inflationary factor might impact our ability to complete those projects, was a concern from them. It's legitimate, we've had the 7%, we think it's going to be higher inflationary factors. It's kind of an interesting observation coming and providing it back to us. We got into a little discussion of how they can contribute and play a role within the district and helping the district. One of the things that happened several years ago, the district was looking at potentially changing the high school schedule from six to seven classes, and the other one was eliminating middle school. And one of the things that came out of that was that a lot of public didn't like it, and they called a lot of legislators, and the legislators couldn't deal with how many phone calls they got. It was very effective. We had a good response from legislature that year in regards to funding and forward funding, it was a, a nice change, and they, they accused the school board members of being behind greater last of schools, and most people denied it, and I said, no, we teach civics, so I guess we're guilty as charged. But it did make a difference to when the public lets the people know their elected officials what they want. And to the degree that we've been out there talking as school board members with legislators, individuals who are contacting legislators, they don't get many phone calls, very few. I've told the story before, people asked, they said, well, if you're not around here, what if people want to come up to you in the store and talk to you? And as I told that story, somebody asked me that question, I said, it happened once. It was at Costco, she was still buying some steaks, and somebody said, oh, I see the school boys buying the value-packed steaks. I said, okay. Well, then after that, I told that story a short time after that, somebody came up, Fred Myers, and said, can I talk to you about the school board issue? And I said, you know, you're only the second person to come up to me. And she said, yeah, how were the steaks? So it was the same person. So you don't have that much contact, my business cards all have my cell phone, I don't get phone calls, but I urge the, the public, if you want the, your elected officials to be responsive, let them know what you want. Contact legislators, contact your senators and representatives, contact the governor's office, contact the US Senate and House, let them know what you want. Your elected officials, we report to you, you are at the top of the pyramid, the public, and I just wish we had more feedback on a regular basis. We try to reach out with meetings for the public to come in, but when they, you get interest enough and you're reaching out, we get a lot of testimony sometimes and, you know, emails, and we appreciate that. I just urge people to do more of it, because I really think all elected officials should be hearing from what the public wants. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. I only have two updates, one, well, actually, an invitation, if you have not been to the Fairview Indoor Playground, you really need to go. It is amazing. I don't know why we didn't think about that before now, but it's amazing, and Jack Jack loves it. And then the other, the only other, that was a comment, my update has to do with the Superintendent's search. We are on track with our timeline, we will update the timeline sometime next week. On the week of the 14th, we narrowed the pool. The week of the 21st, we will do first round of interviews, and then the next week, we will have onsite visits of the final candidates. So a lot of that work is in progress, and we will, we will keep the public, but we are on track to, with our timeline, and we will update the timeline, and we will publish opportunities for the community to get involved once we get the final candidates. So with that, any comments from the gallery, our wonderful people? No? You guys, you want to go home, don't you? I know, I know. Anyway, thank you guys for being here, we thank you for your time. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second to adjourn, any opposition? See none? It'll be daylight outside.